We're going to call this meeting to order, the October 8th Greer City Council regularly scheduled meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone here. I'm here in the mayor's stead. I don't think he's broken anything, so we'll wish him well in his absence. To kick us off, we're going to ask Councilman Akariam Booker to lead us in an invocation and a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Father God, we thank you for this time to come together to do the city business, Father. Lord, we thank you for everything that is going on here in Greer, all the good things. Even we thank you for the things that may not be going so well that we wish could be better. Lord, we ask you to be with those that are least fortunate, especially during this time of the storm. And as we all recover, help us all to be able to find the aid and the help that we need to make us all whole again. And Father, we just thank you for covering each and every one of us throughout this process. And Father, continue to cover the city of Greer. Be with us in our dealings tonight. Let it be fair and equitable to all. And Father, we thank you for everything you're doing. Continue to bless this great state of South Carolina and America. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At each meeting, we have a public forum, which gives members of the public at large the opportunity to speak about something on the agenda. We have one tonight, and that would be Brian Henson. If you would step forward and give us your address and speak your piece, sir.
Yes, sir. 784 Brotman McClyman Road. As y'all know, my family's here for our rezoning, for our second vote tonight. And I won't go through back the whole speech I gave last time, but just very hopeful that the council will consider this zoning. As my sister said, last two weeks ago, we think it's a good fit for our neck of the woods. It's consistent with the zoning that is all around us and the neighborhoods that are around us. And, you know, that's what we want to leave. We want to leave a nice, safe community or space that everybody can enjoy, and it'll be a shining light on the city of Greer. One last thing I'd just like to say about the storm slipped up on all of us, but I am super proud of CPW and the way they reacted. And I'd just like to bring that up. And it's also great to see Greer Rec here with recognizing a rugby team. I'm not a rugby player, but I met some of them in the bathroom. But I am a big fan of Corey Hosclaw, who's a great friend of mine. And me and Corey have worked arm in arm together with Little League Sports. I'm a sports director for District 5 Burns, but I still live in the city of Greer. And he's a good one, and y'all are blessed to have him. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. In addition to CPW, we appreciate all of the efforts of our Public Services Department. And I'm sure you'll probably have more on that later, Andy. After that, here we go to minutes of the council meeting from September 24th. And if you have not read them, take a minute, glance over them, and then we'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or corrections or concerns? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
We're going to do a special recognition now. I'm going to ask members of the Greer 76ers Varsity Boys State Champion Team and their coaches to come up, please. Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to recognize the 2024 South Carolina High School Rugby Union State Champions, Greer 76ers Varsity Boys Rugby Team. This group competed hard all season in multiple states, playing against some of the best competition in the country. After a tough regular season loss to the Oceanside Collegiate Sharks, the Greer 76ers went back to work and defeated Oceanside Collegiate in the South Carolina State Title Rematch. This group then competed in one of the largest rugby tournaments in the United States called Rucker Fest. During the competition, the Greer 76ers defeated the Charlotte Cardinals from North Carolina and St. Edwards from Ohio. After a tough matchup, the Greer 76ers eventually fell to Benedictine from Virginia, but they competed harder all season. These boys represented Greer, South Carolina well. Please help us congratulate your Varsity Boys Greer 76ers 2024 South Carolina State Champions.
You might want to speak?
Sure. Thank you, Ma'am. I'm Coach Marty. I had a chance to step in this season for Warren. And I just wanted to say first, I'd like to thank the city of Greer, mayor, city council, and staff, especially Corey. Without Corey, we couldn't make all this happen. So, we appreciate everything that you do for us, Marty. Also, a special thank you to Warren, who I previously mentioned, for his long-term commitment to advancing rugby in the area and building this awesome relationship with the city of Greer. We have the two best fields in the South. Teams want to come and play us, and it's really amazing when we're able to put on Greer Christmas Sevens. Lastly, I'd like to thank the parents that support us and trust us with their boys. The boys. I couldn't say enough about these guys. And they have the most fun I've ever seen a group of boys have. It's a lot to rein in. It's hard work, but they love the game. They love to have fun, like championship kings and absolute war. These guys never backed down once, and they're the hardest working group of boys I've ever had the fortune to be around. Thank you all, and thank you for this opportunity to play this game here in the city of Greer.
Any other pictures? Everybody got what you call? One more time for this great.
Coach, slide.
Y'all make them pay your competition when they come to Greer, right?
Look up Riley.
Thank you, guys.
Riley do have some big rings, don't they?
Well, to set up a match between.
Fire Propagation. We have a representative gun. We have a float for it.
As these folks clear out, we'll go ahead and start the Propagation for Fire Prevention Week in the city of Greer. Whereas the city of Greer is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires kill more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires. And whereas roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. And whereas the city of Greer residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas the city of Greer first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You," serves to remind us the importance of having working smoking alarms in the home. Now, therefore, on behalf of Mayor Rick Danner and the city council, do I proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this state? And I urge all the people in the city of Greer to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the city of Greer Fire Department. Could we give them a big hand?
Randall, this is your chance.
You and Riley have to do it.
The job that these fellows do is many times unheralded, but it doesn't go unnoticed from us.
We appreciate your support. City Council, without your support, we didn't do what we did. You allowed us to do it. The other Friday was definitely a test of what we could do. And not only did we save the fire department, police department, public services, everybody's staff, but I also saw community set up. And that's the biggest thing. But I will say, if you don't have smoke alarms on campus, don't let those two run.
Thank you. That brings us to the administrator's report. Mr. Mayorman.
Mr. Bettis, council, thank you very much. A few things I want to touch base with you on, and they're mostly all storm-related. I just want to let you kind of just throw some numbers at you to let you know what your departments were doing during the storm. Between the storm's onset on Friday, the 27th, to Wednesday, the October 2nd, public services worked a total of 1,719 man-hours just between those days, clearing trees from power lines, barricading unsafe roads, and clearing more than 3,400 yards of debris. Fire itself on the 27th alone responded to more than 105 calls for service. And Saturday up till Tuesday, there responded to 87 more calls, just storm-related calls. They evacuated people, secured roads, and assisted with power loss at Pelham Medical Center. Some members even deployed with the helicopter aquatic rescue team for rescues throughout the upstate. Your police department responded to traffic obstructions, damaged property, collisions, and provided emergency transportation. The whole team had to handle high call volume. I want to give a special shout out to our folks in telecommunications. In dispatch, they really had their hands full, and they had some challenges with internet and communications in general, but they surpassed all of those challenges and stepped up. We actually had two of our drone operators assist the city of Asheville in some of their work there. Building Development Standards has been working hard to help homeowners and other impacted, those who've been impacted by the storm. Code enforcement inspection teams are performing damage assessments throughout the city. Please, if you do, if you've had some damage to your home and you have some questions about licensing, bonding, permitting, et cetera, call our Building Development Standards Department, and they will work with you to get all of that reestablished. And debris cleanup is now underway. You have seen, if not already, our Public Services Department working as quickly as it can. We are working with the South Carolina Department of Transportation and their contracted debris management company. We just executed that agreement today. I want to thank our local delegation, Governor McMaster, and our federal delegation for their work in assisting getting 100% reimbursement through FEMA. And I do want to echo your comments about CPW. This was quite the storm, and I've been through a number of weather-related emergencies in various parts of the state. And our partners at CPW really did a great job despite the odds. So, it was a team effort. I want to just, I want to make sure that they hear that from me, that I appreciate what they've done. Last but not least, if, just letting you know, we've rescheduled a few of the events that were scheduled during the storm. National Night Out will now be held October 15th, the Hispanic Latino Art Reception, October 22nd, and the Greer Chamber Arts and Eats on the 26th. And just a reminder that it's a great opportunity to explore a career in local government. On October 18th, we'll be holding our Career Fair from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. right here at City Hall. Mr. Bettis, council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Andy, one more time, who did you say the group was that we're working with, the governor helped with, and FEMA?
So, the South Carolina Department of Transportation, we are contracting with their contractor to do the debris management and the debris cleanup. And so, it will be in concert with that State Department. My thanks was to the hard work of our elected officials at the state and federal level who worked to get us the 100% reimbursement for debris cleanup.
One quick shout out that they probably will never hear it directly from us, but I know the fire department was extremely busy, like all the other departments. But we had help from Ori County. They sent an engine with a crew. And then, I think the other day, our department, we had a working fire on North Main where a lady was injured, but it was North Myrtle Beach that was, I think they were with Taylors, and they had come over, so.
And just by way of reminder, we do have a mutual aid agreement with the town of Mount Pleasant, who also are going to be sending resources to help us, too.
What the calls, what were they related to? Why was there such a massive increase that day?
Just any number of, you talking about the emergency response, call fire, and police?
Just the types of calls they were receiving? Because I noticed that, too, and I guess because it was so quiet, and you could just hear the engines running all day and the sirens. I was just curious, you know, what?
Everything from damage to the homes, to damage to cars, to entrapments, to people just generally having anxiety about what's going on, looking for answers. I mean, a lot of that stuff is, hey, I need help. Where can I get help? It was a varying amount of types of calls that were coming into our telecommunications center.
Car crashes where?
Car crashes, yes.
People, you know, through the intersections. I think they had some fires and stuff on fire, that kind of thing.
I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank our Greer City Police Department, the Greer Fire Department, and the Public Service Department that worked so tirelessly over the last couple of weeks to get things straightened out and to do all they did. And also to thank all the workers that came from out of state. Gosh, we had people here working with CPW from Ohio, Missouri, Texas. I can't remember what all I saw on Facebook as to where they were from, but a special shout out to everyone that participated. And I know there were a lot of things that the police did, other than their normal routines, and the fire department, too, and public service, and going through, and so many neighbors, and everybody just getting together to help everybody out. So, from the reports I saw on Facebook, it was tremendous. And I was very happy to see that there were so many workers that came that gave so many compliments on the people here and how nice and polite we were to them at that time, instead of cussing them out and all, you know. So, I was just real pleased with everything that everybody took part in. And a special shout out again to the city. Thank you.
Didn't really want to be mean to somebody who was hooking your power back at the end. All righty, council. That takes us to appointments of boards and commissions. Allison Rauk's term on the housing authority will expire on Halloween. Do we have any action on that?
It has been requested by the housing authority that she be reappointed.
We will entertain a motion to do such.
So moved.
Second. Some here, we got a motion in a second. All those, Ms. Duncan, would you please ask for the move?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Takes us to old business. First item is the second and final reading of ordinance number 34-2024, which is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Eric G. Bridwell located at 711 North Main Street from SN to TN. Ms. Cotty?
I do not have any updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Is there a representative of the property in question with us? Let the record show no. Counsel, any questions on this one? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions now? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Second and final reading of ordinance number 35-2024, an ordinance imposing development impact fees in the city of Greer, enacting Article 4 Development Impact Fees of Chapter 46 by creating Section 46-400 through and including Section 46-407 of the code of the city of Greer, South Carolina, related to development impact fees, invoking the pending ordinance doctrine, and providing for other related matters. Do we have any further information on this?
Mr. Bettis, this is the second reading of the impact fee ordinance that y'all gave first reading to at the end of, excuse me, first meeting in September that was held over to tonight's meeting. No new or additional information.
We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments regarding this ordinance?
Mr. Bettis, council, I'll just say, I appreciate you all indulging us holding this over to tonight. I know we've discussed this ourselves extensively for quite some time, and I feel like we're all pretty much on the same page about this being a tool in our tool belt moving forward, you know, at this stage. I appreciate the opportunity just to make sure that all residents, all stakeholders are able to have a voice and have questions answered and give input as part of this process as well. You know, I'll just say briefly, no solution, no tool is perfect, and certainly impact fees, there's, you know, there's things I know we all are aware, we need to be aware of, you know, where that's concerned, but I definitely feel like this is appropriate for us with what's going on in our community, the growth we're facing, the services and facilities that we need to provide for our community and our residents. I feel like this is an appropriate tool, and as with so many things that we do, this isn't a set it and forget it type proposition, but certainly we can stay nimble and evaluate this as part of the whole puzzle that we'll be using moving forward, so.
Anyone else?
Just to clarify one more time, this is imposed as the permit is pulled to do the construction by the builder?
Yes, sir.
The fee is paid upfront?
Fee is paid upfront as part of your permit fees, but it's not, so when a property is annexed and zoned, that is not when the impact fee is paid, as each individual lot is developed.
And just as a reminder, there's a process that we had to follow to implement this. There's a study that we had to conduct, and?
There is. State law is very specific and very outlined in how an impact fee is to be not only calculated but levied. This has been a, we've actually had, the study was completed in early May, and we've worked on that since then, but it has been a, it's been a long process. But yes, we've checked all the boxes, gone through all the steps, done all the analysis that's necessary to get us to the number where we are.
One piece of feedback that I received was that, you know, it could be tied to some type of deed stamp, and it could be escalated based on purchase price, and that it, yeah, I think the argument against it is that the impact fee could be detrimental to first-time buyers potentially. But I think what was our discussion?
Specifically to that is this idea of a regressive versus a progressive tax. The fee is itself calculated on an immediate impact that has nothing to do with valuation, okay? And if you do it as a deed tax or something along those lines, it's tied to the value of the home, and that, like your millage would be. So, that's where it's, it becomes inequitable because it doesn't accurately reflect the impact that's being had on the system at any given time. It's like you would pay a fee of $25 when you go get your driver's license. Everybody pays the fee regardless of your income level. This is very similar to that. The impact is what the impact is, and it's not tied to the value of the home.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Andy, how soon will reporting come out? Do you think in like six months, a year, when we see kind of how is everything shaping up with the fees?
That would be part of your financial reports monthly at this point, because we'll know at that time. It's got to be kept separately and accounted for separately, so all of those accounts will be part of your financial reports moving forward.
And on those, just to clarify, on the reports, when we see, those are new starts. Those aren't actually finished homes. Those are actually just new starts of construction.
Yeah. We had over 900 so far this year.
And so, every time there's a new start now, this will be?
You can apply, yes, sir.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any further comments? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
That takes us to the second and final reading of ordinance number 36-2024, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain properties owned by Peggy Henson, Peggy S. Henson, located at 780 Brotman McClyman Road and 945 Agner Creek Road from RR to TN. Ms. Cotty, any further information?
I do not have any updates. Just as a reminder, this first ordinance is the first two of five parcels, so it'll be ordinance 36 through 39 are all related to the same case.
And representative of the property is here with us? All righty. We'll entertain a motion then for 36-2024.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about any changes. I mean, I know that we, you know, just made a lot of changes in the rules and regulations concerning construction, what can be allowed, what can't be allowed, and et cetera. So, I just wanted to, sidewalks came to my mind. So, are those still part of the building process?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And setbacks, et cetera?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, most of that has not changed. Minimum of 20 feet setback, exterior and interior sidewalks are required.
And one other thing I wanted to verify, when we approve on council for a project, and right now, my understanding is, I believe there's 120 homes, 60 separate and 60 town homes, correct? So, would that by any chance be allowed to change?
Yes, that is just the developer's intended plan right now. Anything that would be allowed under traditional neighborhood zoning could occur if this project were to fall through.
All right. So, you're saying if we approve 120, I mean, on what we're looking at now? All right, so you're saying if we approve 120, I mean, on what we're looking at now, then they could substantially come back and add 60 or 70 more homes to that property?
Yeah, so you're not actually approving the, the project that they're proposing, you, you would be approving the zoning district, and that does allow up to 10 units per acre, so that would be a maximum of 200 units.
So if, if they make changes in their building plans, that would not have to come back to council, is that correct?
Not unless it exceeded what's allowed by ordinance.
What's allowable is not actually doable on most of these sites. I mean, they're in, obviously the developer wants to maximize the piece of property, but I mean, there's, there's limits to what they can do based on topography and the way the site has to be laid out and different things like that, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's possible that if, if this development fell through and someone wanted to do townhomes, that they could maybe get a little closer to that number, but given roads and stormwater and buffers and open space requirements, it is very difficult to meet the maximum unless it's multifamily, like an apartment complex that goes vertical.
Yeah, I, I don't, I kind of, I guess I have objections to the, I, I know in the past I've heard of people complaining in their neighborhoods that sidewalks did not get built, you know, whereas we had approved, and I guess due to some building situation or whatever they had in their neighborhood, the sidewalks didn't get put where they were supposed to. So, you know, I, I kind of lean, I guess my mind goes to if I'm approving something based on what the builder or developer has said, that they were going to do a number, certain number, I would like to kind of have, if some way, the assurance that that's what it's going to be. You know, I, I know that's a very crowded and overcrowded and with the narrow roads and all out there in that subdivision, and I would just, I don't know, I don't know if there's ever any way for these, because I know, like, you know, with this new procedure that we got, a lot of changes were made, probably a lot of restrictions taken down that we would probably like to see back in there at times, as far as the number of units and setbacks and all that. So I'd like to say that I know that when the developers talk, their plans were 120, I just don't want to look into the development to turn into like 160, 200, you know.
Right, well, and they don't even, they don't even legally have to tell you what they're planning to do. They, they don't require a site plan, they just, you know, willingly provided what their plan is. So council and planning commission should definitely consider worst case or highest density or, you know, when they're making that decision. Staff feels that 10 units per acre is appropriate there, it is between heavy industrial uses and then major thoroughfares, so we feel it's a good transition zoning and density. But yeah, you definitely should consider for, for worst case. And the TIA, if they did change from 120 to something else, they would have to redo their traffic study as well.
That was my next question, speaking of the traffic study. Have they already done it? Because I mean...
They have not. I believe they started it, but I don't, we have not gotten a draft yet.
Okay, but the road improvements would be based off of how many units would be there, and then that would dictate on the traffic study. I mean, they don't put, traffic study, if they say 120, they're going to run it at 120 with the TIA analysis, and that'll dictate...
That's correct.
Whether the turn lanes and things like that.
That is correct.
Have we kind of talked through yet with them about that intersection and...
We have had discussions, we did let them know, we provided the, the study that the property across the street had done for annexation, and let them know that it was very possible that it could, that their development could trigger signal and or roundabout at that intersection. They're aware of that, they're just waiting for the study to come back.
But the higher the density, the, the more out-of-pocket potential it would be for roadway improvements, so there's...
That is true.
There's a catch 22 there, so.
Yes.
I think what they told us is that DOT is going to be looking at this development and combining it with, so it's going to take, taking all that into account.
What, what I'm hearing from you is that they're very aware of the potential commitment and expense that they are incurring, roads, intersection there as well.
I believe they are based on conversations that we've had.
Is it based on the site plan or the potential density?
Uh, it's based on the, the conceptual site plan, so where the entrance, where the proposed entrances are and the number of units.
And then if they alter that, you're saying that has to...
Yeah, if they were to go, if they were to increase units more than like 10% of trips, we would absolutely make them do a new traffic study. Or if it went several years without being developed and those counts were more than two years old, they would also have to do a new study.
Good to know.
Whereas the site plan design has nothing to do with what we're considering tonight, it does have something to do with the traffic impact analysis that will be done, yeah, which is always the case under a rezoning or an annexation where we're assigning a zoning has nothing to do with the look of the product or the exact density, et cetera. We're just assigning a zoning, a general zoning. That's always been the case before we did the, you know, update, and then now as well.
With our, it's been mentioned about the UDO. I reviewed that as closely as I could from front cover to back cover, and I didn't see anything in there that where our ordinance, as far as the severity, was lessened, that it's, it's actually, there's more things that a developer or builder has to do when they come to, to work in our city. If there are people who are saying, well, sidewalks didn't get put in my subdivision, and that's recently, that's not a result of anything the developer did, that would be a result of our staff. And because that's part of it, I mean, you, you have to, before they can have a, I guess a, a final CO for a neighborhood, our staff has to sign off on sidewalks, streets, traffic signage, all, all of that, so it wouldn't be anything that a developer has done, because the developer's going to do what they, they're told they have to do in most cases. And generally, well, not generally, I, my, my experience with staff is that they, they don't miss things. They're, they're, they have a very good staff that, you know, works with everyone from the beginning of the project to the end.
I'll just briefly echo what I said a couple weeks, a couple weeks ago. Brian, appreciate you saying a few words tonight as well. I know the last couple years has been a journey for y'all. You know, we talked about this, these properties what over two years ago now, with much spirited debate and angst for, in one way or the other, that way, and the warehouses that were being requested, we, we said no to at that time. And I specifically, in my conversation with your neighbors in the area, that I still have great relationships with today even, you know, what, what I advocated for publicly, this is the kind of product, the kind of project that I said, you know, would be welcomed by the neighbors, and that's exactly what's being requested, the same type of density. You know, and talking to some folks, you know, even over the last few weeks, you know, folks not wanting, you know, any higher density than the existing neighborhoods around, we, we, again, a couple years ago, we, we knew that this was going to be a transitional-type project, you know, like you said, the intense industrial usages, the proximity to 85, being on these ma, major thoroughfares that way, and so whereas I understand, you know, something like this, change like this is not without bumps and without its own challenges, this is exactly what neighbors said we'd welcome, and it's what's being requested, and I think this is as good as we could expect to go on that corner. I've said it multiple times, that corner as well as a corner we're going to be talking about in a little bit, we have to get those corners right for this area, and I think we are with, with this project.
Any other comments? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance 37-2024, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Brian Allen and Janice L. Henson located at 784 Brockman McClyman Road from RR to TN. Ms. Cotty, any changes in this one?
No, this is just parcel three of five.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this property? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 38-2024, ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Jeffrey L. and Amy E. Harvey located at 788 Brockman McClyman Road from RR to TN. Ms. Cotty, any changes?
Nope, parcel four of five.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance 39-2024, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Michael and Nancy Hawkins Smith located at 792 Brockman McClyman Road from RR to TN. Ms. Cotty, any changes?
No changes, this is the last of the five parcels.
All right, we will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions in regard to this property? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance 40-2024, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Durham Kids Investments LP and Jones Kids Investments LP located at 107 Cannon Street from CC to GS. Ms. Cotty?
I do not have any updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the case.
All right, do we have an owner or representative of the property here?
Sure.
Let the record show no. Will we entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments regarding this particular property?
Tell me one more time what they're going to do with this.
Uh, so it is said to be a food hall, so similar to Gather Greenville or Vaughn's Warehouse, with I think four to five indoor tenants and a potential arcade, and then 200-ish seats indoors and 400-ish seats outdoors and a covered stage for entertainment.
And this is going where the existing spinning Jenny is?
Yes, sir.
Is it going to, the structure going to be taken down, or is it...
No, it is planning to be upfit, and then the outdoor area will be the majority of the parking lot, and they'll retain one row of parking.
Yes, sir. Looking forward to seeing it.
All right, we have a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, it's your turn.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. That takes us to new business. First reading of ordinance number 41-2024, an ordinance authorizing the closure of an alley in the city of Greer, 133 Tremont Avenue.
Me, Mr. Bettis, counsel, this is one of those that come to y'all from time to time, the closure of an alley for the development, for the purposes of development of a piece of property. This is at 133 Tremont Avenue. All the necessary steps for closure have been taken, absent council's action, and we're just here for first reading.
We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments regarding this? No? If none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 42-2024, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Frank W. and Tammy Merritt located at 1035 Abner Creek Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of TN for said property. Ms. Cotty?
All right, thank you. This is an annexation request for one parcel. It's a little under 25 acres, the northeast corner of Brockman McClyman and Abner Creek Road. Council saw an annexation for this property last month for medium density, which was denied, so the applicant has applied for annexation with a less intense zoning of traditional neighborhood or TN. This is the zoning map. The dark blue and blue are manufacturing and logistics. Green is rural residential, which, as you'll see, those five parcels were earlier tonight, rezoned to traditional neighborhood, and then that orange color is either DRD or Overton Park, which is traditional neighborhood as well. This is the future land use map. The area surrounding this parcel is designated as mixed employment, while south of Abner Creek Road is suburban neighborhood. And then this is a street view of the property. And again, the request is to annex and zone TN traditional neighborhood. It is surrounded by residential, vacant land, fire station, and then neighborhoods like Vines Creek. Again, the comprehensive plan is mixed employment, staff does recommend approval, and they will have a public hearing with planning commission on Monday, October 21st.
Is an owner or representative of this property with us tonight?
Yes.
Okay, would you be willing to ask her, ask, answer questions if we have them?
Yes.
All right, just stand by. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions, comments?
Actually, in a situation like this where you've got competing developments, typically the last one to the table on the traffic study is the one that has to bear the burden of road improvements. How are we, how do we handle this situation?
Potentially. Hopefully, these projects will align, that improvements can be done together. So because this is an annexation, this project already did their traffic study, and they did not trigger a roundabout or signal. However, they did trigger a southbound right turn lane from Brockman McClyman onto Abner Creek. SC DOT did not like that improvement because of the four-way stop condition, and they recommended a payment and lieu for that improvement, and then that payment and lieu would go towards a larger intersection improvement. So if the properties across the street did trigger with their development, then that money would be kind of to help offset some of their costs to do that overall improvement. It, it's a little sticky, it's going to take some development agreements, probably some right-of-way from both, but alone, they don't trigger, so it'll just kind of depend, you know, if this project were to go away and then the other one across the street went, it would depend what their traffic study said. We may end up getting payment and lieu from one, waiting for the other side to develop. It could go a lot of ways. I'm cautiously optimistic that they'll both move forward and we can kind of work together to get an improvement designed. But I, I will say I can't guarantee that both developments will trigger that signal, but based on what DOT has said, I think it's close, so I think there's a good chance of that.
But both projects can operate, they're not being necessarily tied together when it comes to permitting, everything, they're still standalone, because like I said, one could not happen and the other one still move forward. Shouldn't, didn't want to get in the case where you've kind of lumped them both together and, you know, one is waiting on the other and then something happens and... know, one is waiting on the other, and then something happens and they're kind of stuck, so...
It shouldn't, but we'll definitely have to work with DOT, kind of depending on which one comes first. I think we'll know a lot more once the rezoning on the northwest corner, their traffic study is complete. But they did take into account the potential development on this corner as their background traffic.
Haven't we heard from, and I might be wrong, I heard from both parties that they kind of expect that they'll be combined together and they're basically would work together to get those improvements done if that's what DOT so desires.
I do believe the applicant for the rezoning did indicate that at first reading.
How many townhomes are planned for this one?
Um, I...
And it's all, it's all townhomes on this one, right?
It is. It's a planned townhome. Again, I believe they're planning somewhere between 150 to 170. Maximum density would be higher at 247, still much lower than the medium-density residential that would have allowed up to 430. But again, I think that density could only really be accomplished in a vertical multifamily. But they are planning between kind of six and a half units per acre to seven, and then again, the max is 10. And I, I mean, you can absolutely ask the applicant if they have more up-to-date information, but we haven't received any.
Happy to answer, Ashley.
You have, you have further information?
Happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Okay.
We, I can go with the DOT, we need to...
But is there anything in addition to what we already know?
No, sir.
Okay.
Everything that was presented when we were here last time is exactly how we intend to move forward.
Right. I know it's been a few weeks since we heard from them the la, the last time, but to summarize, the intention for the project, nothing has changed with the intention of the project. Literally, the only change is the zoning classification that we're approving, which lowers that density cap for the site. If something didn't ha, if the, if the project as presented didn't happen, we have a lower cap in place, which was the whole rub a few weeks ago, essentially.
And I believe based on the public comment we got at last meeting, that's what folks were, folks were asking.
That was a big, well, that was definitely what made me more nervous, is having that open-ended higher cap. But I think, again, you know, these two corners, having those transitional projects where we know it's a little bit higher density, you know, project, these are, I do feel good about the improvements at the intersection, otherwise, I know we don't know that for sure, nothing's set in stone, but I do feel good about that. Getting the right projects on these two corners is the way that we're going to improve those roads and that intersection and improve traffic flow and safety in that area. And again, these are the type of projects that we've talked about being appropriate on these corners for several years now, so I know entrances are behind, entrances can change, but I, I actually like where the entrances are planned right now, as opposed to dumping out on Brockman, so, yeah.
And I don't, they absolutely could change a little bit on Agner Creek, but not having an egress under Brockman McClyman was dictated by DOT, so I don't, I don't foresee that changing.
Any other questions or comments? We're good. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Can I say, Mr. Mayorman left, so maybe we should have an executive session about him? If not, we'll adjourn. How about that?